For you to pitch people were waiting for the city clerk to return. That was Tim's, we're not quite there yet. I'd like to call the words February 11th, 2021 meeting of mayor and council, and I could ask your councilman Ben Norton to lead us in prayer, followed by the political allegiance.
Shout out, pray. I've got a prayer for you to be here today for tonight, thank you for the strength and the energy to do so. Lord, first of all, we're allowed to lift up the families of some of our city families, our lost children this week in tragic ways. We pray, Lord, that you will give your comfort and peace during this time. We pray for our frontline workers. We ask, Lord, that you protect our police, our fire, our medical personnel during this time which we're living. We pray, Lord, for our staff in the city, for the all employees of our city. We pray for their protection, may your hand be upon them. We pray for our meeting tonight, that you will make this council, mayor, to lead the city away from sweeping to you.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, all whose name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, awards and presentations. This is both an award and a presentation. It's our municipal audit for the fiscal year 2020. Chuck Inkins, our finance director, will introduce Mark Rogers with Henderson Goddard and present the audit to both council and its citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think everyone's aware, the city is required to have an audit of its books every year for the year FY20. That audit was performed by the firm of Henderson Goddard, as it has been for the last several years. We have Mark Rogers with Henderson Goddard here to present the 2020 municipal audit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pleased to be with you tonight to present your audit for the year June 30th, 2020. I've given everybody a little sheet that's got two-page letter and then has four pages of charts behind it. We'll be going through that tonight. We have completed our audit. The date of our report was 12/31/20. We completed the audit for the financial statements for the year in June 30th, 2020, as contained in the cap record. Total government revenues for all funds were eighty-eight million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand for the year, eighty-eight million. The general fund, which is your largest fund, ended with a budgetary income of five-hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, five-hundred and thirty-six thousand. Revenues received totaled thirty-five million, six eighty-eight, and were under budget by one million and ten thousand dollars. Expenditures were thirty-seven million, eight thirty-two, and were under budget two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Net transfers in were two million, five sixty-two, and were under budget five hundred and eighty-one thousand. The chart above shows the breakdown of revenue in the general fund. As you can see on the chart, property taxes accounted for thirty-two percent of the revenue. Sales tax contributed to twenty-five percent of the revenue. Other taxes accounted for thirty-five percent. Let me see what makes up the balance of it. The next chart, the next one shows expenditures in the general fund. You can see the general government makes up twenty-three percent of the expenses. The police represent forty-two percent of the expenses. The fire department represents twenty-four percent of the expenses. All right, going on to other governmental funds, special revenues. The majority of the activity in the special revenues was the accommodation tax funds, accounted for two million, seven hundred thousand of the revenue, and two million and fifty-three thousand of the expenditures for you. Under your capital projects, total capital project revenue was fifteen million for the year, expenditures were ten million, eight oh six. This year, your sales tax was broken down into two sales tax funds. The first part of the year was through the 2013 fund, which accounted for seven million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand of the revenue, and nine million and forty-one thousand of expenditures. The latter part of the year was the 2019 fund, which accounted for four million, four hundred and twenty-three of the revenues, and one hundred and thirty-one thousand of expenditures. The airport fund had revenues of one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, and expenditures of one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. The enterprise funds, which can be found on page six of the handout, enterprise funds totaled thirty million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand of revenues. Expenses were twenty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-seven. The majority of that was from the water sewer fund, which accounted for twenty million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand of the revenue. Capital contributions from SPOLS were six million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, resulting in net income of six million, sixty-nine thousand. Sanitations revenue were five million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, resulting in a net income of one hundred and thirty-four thousand. Your internal service funds, which operate to service the other funds of the city, total revenues were thirteen million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, expenses were fourteen million, two fifty-two, and transfers in were one million, four oh four. Significant events this year, the water sewer fund continued with major water and sewer upgrades by adding up, adding five million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand in construction, with five hundred and forty-five thousand coming from the GFA loans, and three million, six hundred and ninety-five coming from the SPOLS funding. Total sales tax projects for the year accounted for nine million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, including two million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand in GFA loan payments for the water. The federal awards for the year totaled one million, eight hundred and eight thousand. The HUD represented five hundred and sixty-eight thousand of that number, and the FAA grants represented one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand. At this time, I take any questions?
Mark, we're in pretty good shape.
We're in very good shape. Especially for a COVID year? Absolutely.
To our city and staff, thank you for the job. Mark Harvard, Chuck Inkins rested you for contributing. We're talking about some of the health insurance funds as well. Thank you guys very much. Council?
It's nice to see our general fund balance go up.
Absolutely.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please, officer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I gotta imagine seventy-five percent of the city of America have a pretty difficult goal after third year. Again, that's off the city's stuff. City council, minutes ruled, we'll move on to item three. Council set time to review the additions to the special public meeting on January 13th and the regular meeting on January 21st. Council any additions or deletions to that? Here in one, minutes are approved by affirmation. Item four, the requests and resolutions. Item A, consideration of a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation for the purchase of ballistic vests for the Dallas Fire Department. Chief, Frank Battle will present. Uh, chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. We were resolution asking permission to file a grant through Firehouse, S.O.S., Public Safety Foundation. They provide life safety equipment for first responders. We have applied in the past in an attempt to buy the furbilators and the federal instruments. We've run successful at that time. This time we filed a grant, or asked permission to file a grant for ballistics. As with other equipment, we're trying to be fiscally responsible and get the best assistance possible for our people. So in this case, I consulted with the chief of police in order to find a level of protection without compromising mobility of our personnel. For the last year and a half, we've been training as a rescue task force for active shooter events, so we want to add that level of protection so that we match our law enforcement cohorts in the event. So we're asking for twenty vests to come to the total of thirteen thousand dollars. This is zero match grant, so we're just trying to find a responsibility from the city.
Council, a question for the chief. It'll be an easy one. Can I get a motion?
I'm asking to approve this resolution. Oh, no, just submitting a resolution.
All in favor, put a hands. Thank you, council. Chief, stay put. Consideration of a resolution to apply for grant funding again. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security is signed for breathing apparatus.
Again, we're asking for consideration of resolution to apply for grant through Homeland Security as to assist this firefighting grant we've been able to take advantage of in the past for equipment. During this time, we're asking for assistance through AFG for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, which provides breathing air for our personnel when they enter into the environment that's immediately dangerous to life and health. This is a ten percent match, and the total for the grant is three hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. If we're approved, then we're responsible for ten percent of that at thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cents. It's important that we replace our SCBA's because there's been some major updates since the last purchase. And so we're just asking permission to continue to process and apply for the grant.
And council, any questions for the chief again? May I have a motion to approve the grant application?
I would like to hear a couple of questions by chief. Second.
All in favor, show a hands. Council, thank you, chief. Thank you. Item C, consideration of a resolution for the adoption of a public transit Title VI plan for the city of Allosa. Richard Harding, our deputy city manager of operations, will present. Hi, Richard.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is consideration of a resolution for the adoption of the public transit Title VI plan for the city of Allosa. The city of Allosa applies for the federal transportation grant on June 6th, 2020, to the Georgia Department of Transportation, to assist in the funding of the public transit system. In order to receive federal funds, the recipient of the city of Allosa must have a public transit Title VI plan in place. Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act requires that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation or be denied benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination on any program of activity receiving medical or natural assistance. The city of Allosa Transit Director collaborated with both GDOC and Southern Georgia Regional Commission to develop this plan. Adoption of this plan by the city is a requirement that must be met by GDOC, given the city of Allosa notice to proceed authorization, the further contract negotiations, and approval between the city and River North Transit E. of to bring public transportation to Allosa. Staff recommends council adopt the resolution of the public transit Title VI plan in order to meet both FTA and GDOC requirements to receive medical or natural assistance. Standing by for any questions.
Council, any questions for the Title VI plan? I want to take a motion.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve consideration for the, we approve consideration of the resolution for the adoption of a public transit Title VI plan.
Wonderful.
Second.
That's all I can say.
Yeah, Eric, thank you, mayor.
Council, show a hands all a bit. Thank you. I have indeed consideration of a resolution in support for the filing of a grant application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Historic Preservation Division for Phase Two, the survey of the Allosa local historic district map and marker plan in the subject of history that will be designed.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. We are a certified local government in historic preservation, have been for many, many years. As part of that program, we're required to update the historic resources inventory of our local historic district. We completed Phase One of that last fall, which took here over the northern half of the district. We're now seeking grant funding to assist with Phase Two, which is the southern half of the historic district. So we'll have those back to back, and we will complete our obligations. The terms of the grant are the same as before, it's the same matching, but it is a competitive grant program with federal pass-through money to the state. We submit the grant application this month, the state announces the awards over the summer. We do not know what the awards will be if we get it, and if so, how much, but the numbers are based on the previous phase, so we're hopeful that we'll get Phase Two funded. But it's for an amount of two thirty thousand in matching, whether it be cash match or in the kind. Under Phase One, we're able to utilize about two-thirds of that for in the kind, so it's a lot less than that's there. And so Phase Two, we'll complete our obligations, proceed on D. S.A., and then perhaps we'll get a Phase Three, which would be areas around the current district, including the national register district that we talked about Tuesday night. I mean, your package, the topic of the resolution, I've also emailed you the current map that shows the differences between local and national register, as well as the narrative that describes some of that.
Very well. Got some other questions for Matt? I'll let you see that, but Matt, Tuesday, Tuesday night?
I have a question, but I want to get a few related information, because to be clear on a couple of things that we need to cover, local and national.
Good, very good.
How's the setup in office, or what they have all been understanding?
He can educate you in a hurry about this.
Let's get the driving door.
Yes.
All right. Matt, then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion to approve.
Mayor, make a motion to approve this request decision.
Second.
All in favor, show a hands. Council, thank you very much. Item Five, bids contracts, agreements and expenditures of consideration bid for the construction of the city of Allosa downtown amphitheater park, that comes right below.
Good, good evening. I sent you all the site plan that you requested the other night in the work session, and I've also put my two copies. The, as we discussed, we acquired this piece of land, California City Hall at Lee and Central Avenues. It was decided during a retreat that you were all open to constructing a downtown amphitheater park there, where we could have outdoor venues to help bring folks downtown. And as we recall back in 2019, prior to the pandemic, we had quite a few of the city food truck events down there and other events. We've had a Christmas tree, it's very popular. So with that, we put out for bid the construction of the park. There will be an amphitheater similar to what you see up there on the screens, and there will also be some type of water feature. We'll have plenty of ample parking for food truck events, there'll be an area for our Christmas tree, the ponds, which will be bioretentional ponds, which will have flowering plants and those type of, so they'll be very attractive. And we put out a bid, and we got, well, we had a pre-bid meeting, like I said, back in December, we had ten folks show up. We opened the bids on Friday, January 29th, the low bid came from Artesian Contracting, Albany, Georgia, and they're doing other work for us for the parks. And tonight, we're recommending that you approve the bid that was submitted by Artesian in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, plus the ten percent contingency for a grant total of a million, two sixty-three, four hundred and sixty dollars. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions for that? What's the honor of this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid estimated in the amount of two, one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars from Artesian. I agree.
Okay. All in favor, show a hands.
You're making a move, too, you're seeing.
Yes, sir. That's all I can say.
All in favor, show a hands. Council, thank you. All right, item six, consideration of local funding requests, consideration of request of purchase of seventeen self-contained breathing apparatus, equipment for the Dallas Fire Department, Chicago will get presented.
Thank you. We're requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of seventeen seventeen breathing apparatus, as I said earlier, as the tanks that provide breathing air when firefighters enter into the atmosphere that is immediately dangerous to life and health. Again, staying with the trend and being fiscally responsible, yet providing the best protection for our personnel, put three manufacturers out of fire trucks for our personnel to try out, and did a end department survey, to see what the members of the department favored. We came back with a fifty-fifty split between MSA and Scott, keeping in mind history of Fire Department, we transferred over to Scott in 1998, away from BISI, which is none of our business. So with the fifty-fifty split, we presented this to command staff within the department, and the decision was made because of the cost of transferring over to a new manufacturer, with certain things that weren't standardized, there were going to be additional purchases that would be responsibility to the city, and the decision was made to stay with Scott, which our personnel are already very familiar with. This is a three-year cycle, through SPOLS funding, that we wanted to change out all the current SCBA's to the current update, because there's been, like I said, some major updates since the last purchase. With that being said, we're asking permission to proceed with purchase of seventeen self-contained breathing apparatus, an additional cylinder, comes to a total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eleven cents on state contract, and we will approve through both process, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, company of one hundred and five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Well done. Council, any questions for the chief?
Question. Chief, does this purchase of this help us maintain the will of our asset rating for the line?
It does, since in maintaining that, because we do have to, not only for our equipment, but it's in compliance. So we have to start moving towards that, and our goal is to not have a one big financial responsibility of changing out sixty units or fifty units at one time, doing the same thing with years, you guys know, trying to put in a working schedule, so that there's a continuous, smaller fiscal responsibility than one big burden at one time. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, thank you. Council? Motion for the purchase.
Mayor, make a motion to purchase seventeen seventeen containing breathing apparatus, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eleven cents from Scott.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, show a hands. Council, thank you. We'll move on to board commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. I've had consideration of appointments to the community development block grant citizens' advisory committee, a very important committee in our city. There are four slots on the City of G. Citizens Advisory Committee held by Councilwoman Vivian Norah Cody, Rebecca Taylor, Todd Simpson, and David Adams, who's terminated by February 24, 2021. Ms. Taylor, Mr. Simpson, and Mr. Adams have not expressed interest in serving again, and Councilwoman Milliken Cody is interested and will submit an application in the very near future. The following applicants have submitted their applications with consideration, Beverly Richardson Blake, and Deborah White. Council, we have four slots available, two applicants, and I have a motion for appointments and can take them at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, I have, just with that objection, go ahead and make a motion to re-employ Councilwoman Norah Cody, Beverly Richardson Blake, and Deborah White, to those positions.
Council, I have to back up these all two for consideration, Beverly Richardson Blake, and Deborah White. Councilwoman Cody will submit her in the very near future. I imagine it would be a good issue. One.
I was trying to be nice to you. I wish we had that for us.
All right. So we resubmit the motion.
The two, appoint the two.
Second.
That's all, in favor, show a hands. Thank you. Thank you to the two applicants. I have a big consideration of appointments to the hospital authority of Allosa and Allos County. Hospital authority of Allosa and Allos County is a member of Tim Dame, who's terminated by February 1st, 2021. The hospital authority by Allos required to submit three names for consideration. For Mr. Dame's seat, the following three names have been submitted for consideration. One, Tim Dame, two, Michelle Hayes, and three, Susan Swader. Council, I'll now open this up for nominations as well. And three, Susan Swader. Council, I'll now open this up for nominations as well.
I agree, and Cody, I think I'm going to turn to Damon, my center right down.
Damon.
Reassign this position, sir.
Council, any other nominations? If not, close out nomination. Yeah, that's a, a method for approval as well. Thank you very much, Council. I seek consideration of appointments to the Valdosta Historic Preservation Commission. There are three slots on the Valdosta Historic Preservation Commission held by Dr. Charles Alex Alvarez, Sandy Burkett, and Selena Black. And his term expires February thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Dr. Albert Alvarez, Ms. Burkett, and Mr. Black, Ms. Black, have all expressed an interest in being reappointed. However, the applications for Ms. Burkett and Ms. Black were not received prior to the deadline. Their applications will be submitted in the very good future. The only application we see was submission consideration by Dr. Alvarez. Again, we got three slots left, so, Council, take a look.
I make a motion to reappoint Dr. Charles Alvarez.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands? And Dr. Alvarez. Did I even finish out that formality, but we went up again? So thank you, Council, very much.
You can, but you get my, my desperation down, but, but it doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt at all.
You're correct.
Yeah, but let's go ahead and do the formality. If somebody would go ahead. Yeah, we'll take a second because we already have a second. Show of hands, all in favor. Thank you so much. Very much. Thank you, Council. All right, item A. Citizens to be heard? It says none to be heard, but we can get to see one. Our burgers will be forced.
We've had a new, uh, citizens to be heard. This is from our last meeting with the incoming as Fuchs from Tipton. Who is interested in lifting the moratorium on baking shops. As we talked about last week, we've been waiting for some state guidance on that. Session got cut short last year because of COVID. We hear they may be taking this up again this year, so we kind of want to structure our ordinance around what the state could say. So this is just my response to her, you know, every time a citizen comes up to be heard, if I can respond, I do, we'll let her email. So this is just like, you know, this is the email that we sent that said, we'll be looking at this moratorium the next thirty, sixty, ninety days. Either be looked at or to actually just get an ordinance on our books that apply directly to baking. That's what this is right here. It's not, it's not, it's not a new thing that we got that's with directors.
Mark, just to clarify, I see, uh, to my knowledge, there's nothing new on state management structure regarding these baking shops, which is really what we've kind of waited on.
That's right. There is, there, there is something. Now, if they get to it, that's another story. That I think it may, then I could do last year, to be quite honest with you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mark. Anything for the city managers report?
Just one thing real quick. You know, since the evening I mentioned that the selection committee for the municipal judge was happening yesterday. We had our first kickoff meeting, very successful. We feel that we're going to meet those dates that we gave you earlier, that you hopefully will make that appointment on March the eleventh. So just want to let you know that we are making progress in that area.
Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to council comments. You guys want to go in any kind of order? I'll start, start with any of yous. No comments? Councilwoman Cody?
I take my second vaccine February seventeenth at eight AM.
So get, get right up to my microphone and say that again. You encourage the citizens.
I take my second vaccine for COVID nineteen, February seventeenth at eight AM. And yours truly, and my favorite person, Ashley, probably the one with me, to the doctor at the end. So we can put this out for the public, you understand? The orders of our city citizens taking the vaccine shot. Again, I do urge that we continue to promote the importance of vaccine, especially for our city citizens. They're probably older. We're not old, but we're not mine.
You've got some more?
I just want to add about the amphitheater. I guess it's a great addition downtown.
I'll reject the council comments and say great work and I, and I second that. What's happening in our downtown is just absolutely amazing. With three entrepreneurial projects and a couple, couples waiting to launch, so it's an exciting time for our downtown. Councilman Gary? Councilman George? Councilman Albert?
Mayor, I have to add something. I just wanted to let everyone in the community know that I know I often see the. Ethics, you might say, going right, you know, on Facebook and in the meeting. I want everyone to know that we take those issues seriously, so I would certainly want to address them. But instead of turning this into a vaccine session and being on the mayor's system, I'd like if you could sit and have some big, uh, teachers as a teaching moment. Maybe some people don't understand why these, why people take that so seriously. They never had to, dollars six on them for the right to vote. They never had to get, I mean, dumb laws were in the jar just for the right to vote. They never had to walk five miles to vote, then turn around and walk five miles back, thought they were told they were in the wrong place. Just to walk two more miles, just to be told that now it's closed. So he's a teaching moment. So now that we, we're not afraid to confront each other. Because the only way that we're going to get past this is talk to one another instead of talking past one another. So to. Pastor Reginald Benjamin, who was offended by the comments because he can't, and he never received anything. Till the thirty-year-old who was retired chief of care, and anyone else who may have been offended by some of those comments. I think this is now the time to begin. Reach out to one another again. Just have a conversation about, because we're never going to get past this if we don't learn how to talk to one another. And I'd like to apologize to any of our staff, any of our city employees, anyone who felt offended by some of the comments that were made. But I still think we should take this opportunity to justify my support for this thing. When we say, because we're always going to be able to understand just because of the position and the type of, you know, as public officials. And that's all I have.
Got some other thing? Go ahead, motion to the governor. All in favor, show of hands?